Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, December 3rd. It is 7:00 PM. The first case we're going to have tonight is case number 25-12 for 112 Union Street. And I think Judy, you're going to recuse yourself?
Yeah.
So, this is 112 Union Street, MAP 20, Prowl 45, special permit under section 6C-4A of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow more than one principal building on a lot. The project will consist of the construction of six detached, single-family condominium homes on 1.45 acres, more or less. Okay, and we have some correspondence for this. So we have the application. So we have from one memo from the town engineer on this for case number 2512, special permit on 112 Union Street. And he offers the following comments. One, road design appears to generally follow planning board standards for construction, slope, et cetera, with the road width of 24 feet, which has been typical for site plan driveways. Two, sewer and water were previously stubbed off Union Street and are available. The design utilizes gravity sewer to the extent it can, with the front two units served by gravity and the four rear units relying on individual injector pumps through the site gravity system. The water design is straightforward and not looped. Three, I have witnessed test pits for drainage on site and reviewed these results with the proposed design and find the system to be well above any observed groundwater and in the general proposed design appear to be adequate and well detailed. No drainage report was filed. The design captures site roadway stormwater and does not discharge onto Union Street. Four, I have performed a cursory review of the traffic study and agree with the consultant's analysis of the adequacy of site distance available at the site drive to Union Street. I suggest the recommendation to provide a stop bar and stop sign at the site drive intersection with Union Street be adopted. Five, I'm aware of a review by the fire department and their support, and support their recommendations for placement of a fire hydrant. And finally, six, the town has spent significant grant and capital funds installing and upgrading sidewalks along Union Street over the past few years on both sides of Pleasant Street. This development will reap the benefits of this investment. I recommend that the applicant place a cement concrete sidewalk from the Westerly site boundary to the intersection of Pleasant Street. The work may be performed by the developer or a contribution for off-site mitigation may be required. And that would, with the work performed by the town's contractor. And we have a letter from Patrick DeShanes, from the Director of Community and Academic Development, that looks at areas such as the bylaw and site plan comments, including most of the ones who are just identified by the town engineer. I didn't see anything from fire. Do we have anything else?
I think it's in the back.
Okay, here it is. From Alan Hoover, Deputy Fire Chief, we have, in reference to the plans for 112 Union Street, we find the plans acceptable for our operations. Two, we request that the hydrant be located prior to Unit 1 to adequately cover all units. And we have from the planning board review, and the planning board will not be meeting before comments are due for this. But this will be going to the planning board for site plan review also?
Yep.
And also, have you filed with CONCOM? Do you have anything with CONCOM on this?
We'll have the land service permit.
Okay. So this is the first opening of this. We've opened the case, and if you want to explain what you're proposing.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Brian Almeida for the applicant, Union Street Investment Group. With me is Rob Truax of Truax Engineering. And for the applicant, John Walsh and Brian Glennon. Just at the outset, to clarify, this is for a special permit under section 6C-4A for more than one principal building on a lot, where the applicant has also shown that the design and placement of the buildings will be in harmony with the general character of the neighborhood, streetscape, driveways, building placement, setbacks, volume, and spacing. And pursuant to that section of the bylaw, we also need to elaborate as to why the other typical special permit factors are met in this case. We submit that they are. The plan complies with the applicable standards, both from a usage standpoint and dimensionally with the requirements of the bylaw, with respect to vehicular traffic or an excessive concentration of vehicles or visitors. The traffic study from Kimley Horn that was submitted to the board and corroborated by the town engineer indicated that this development would have a negligible impact on traffic and concentration with respect to danger posed by fire, explosion, emissions, et cetera. We submit that there are no such risks created by this development, no risk of noise, vibration, or any nuisance. And with respect to the general character of the neighborhood, we submit that rather than detract from, this would actually be in conformance with the general character of the neighborhood and the general residence zoning district. The property currently is home to a three-family building, and it's surrounded by many single-family and multifamily uses, so this use would be consistent with that. And then with respect to it being compatible with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, the purpose of the general residence district is basically to provide for a number of different residential options, and this would provide a significant influx in availability of housing, given that it's currently a three-family and would now be six units. With respect to fiscal benefit to the town, I believe that the memorandum that we submitted had a projection as to the tax benefits to the town from taking this from a three-family, one building to six different dwelling units. So for all those reasons, we would submit that the special permit criteria have been met, and I'm happy to take any questions from the board as to that or to any legal issues. And otherwise, I'll defer to Mr. Truax to walk the board through the plan.
So, yeah, we really don't look at the tax revenue aspects of a project like this. That's not in the scope of the zoning board. But we can, why don't we go through the project and take a look at what's being proposed?
You all see that? Okay, for the record, Rob Truax, Truax Engineering Group. So this is a site located at 112 Union Street. What I've got on the board here is, we're looking at the existing site as it is today. So we have an existing three-family dwelling, sets back about 150 feet off the road. There's a driveway that comes in loops around the front of the lot. The lot is relatively flat till you get to the house, and then it drops off about 20 feet as you slope to the rear of the property. The whole site is primarily open with lawn area. There are some wooded areas in the northeast corner, which is back here where it says F1. There's an old stone foundation back there in the corner. There's some specimen trees up in the front, but the rest of this area, as you see it here, is all lawn, open lawn area. The house is currently serviced by Town Water, Town Sewer. So the proposal is, we build six individual homes. We would come in with a roadway or access drive that's 24 feet wide, providing a cul-de-sac, which is in conformance with what you'd see in a regular subdivision. We have two units up in the front, units one and two, and then as you come down to the back, we have four units across the back. The units sit, as you come down to these two, there's a screen porch on the back, which is optional when they go to buildings, but the porch is approximately 35 feet from about its property line on the left side as you come in, so you get a feel for how much distance there is. And then as you go down to the back, these units are sitting, the closest one is 31 feet, and they go to 33, 35, and this side yard is just only 11 feet, and this side yard over here is 21 feet, to give you an idea of how close the units are around the site. Every site, every home has a two-car garage. Two cars can park in front of the garage as well. Some of the driveways are a little bit longer. They can, you can see there's a couple in the back that they could probably fit another car in front of those two cars. The roadway, as I said, is 24 feet wide, proposing a Cape Cod berm, one foot on either side, so it actually gives you a width of about 26 feet of actual pavement. The site will be serviced by Town Sewer. The sewer has been stubbed into the site. We did that this summer. There's been an eight-inch sewer line brought onto the property. There's also been an eight-inch water line brought onto the property this summer. Unfortunately, we can only get gravity to the front two units, so we're going to come in with a sewer line that'll be gravity going out to the street. And then as you go to the back of the site, it drops off, so these units will have to have individual pump systems that will pump up to the gravity line and then go out to Union Street. The water line comes in, dead ends, provides services to every house. I think the fire chief had a comment about the hydrant location, which we can accommodate him wherever he'd like to put it. I think he wanted to pull it back some, closer to Union Street. We did do a drainage study. It was submitted, it was not reviewed, it'll be reviewed under the site plan review process. So, but I'll go over that with you, just so you have a feel for what's going on on the site. We did do soil testing out there with the town engineer this past year, and we found that all the area was good gravel, sands, rapid perk rates. We did not hit groundwater. We dug some holes 16 feet deep, especially up in the front. We even got deeper in some areas. So it was really conducive to allow us to do a lot of groundwater recharge on the site. So the entire site, all the paved surfaces, all the roof runoff, everything is directed to a recharge system. There's three of them on the site. There's one up in the front that captures the two units roofs in the front. There's one in the cul-de-sac that captures the roadway area, and then there's one in the back corner that captures the roofs for the four units along the back. We sized all these, generally when we do a drainage study for a site, we look at what the existing runoff is leaving the site, and we try to match that, so that we're not increasing it and we're not decreasing it. However, on this particular site, there's really no place for the water to go off-site but to one of Butters' property. So we sized these recharge units to have no discharge whatsoever, other than recharge back into the ground. So they're oversized of what we would normally do, like a subdivision, if we had a place to let it overflow to. So we've sized them to handle 100-year storm, which is almost eight and a half inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period, and they have, they even have freeboard inside them, so they're designed to handle all of that water, not just the increase in flow, but what's coming off the site completely. So I think that's important to understand, because we do have a Butters along the back of the property, that everything kind of goes in that direction. So, we are providing, there's a landscape plan in your packet, but we are providing an earth berm along this left property line, and we did a planting plan for that, which is in your packet. You'll see that in the landscape plan. I know the applicants had a couple of meetings with the neighbors, and some of those are the things that were discussed and brought out in that meeting, so we put that into the plan set. I think there's some other things you may hear tonight that will work with the neighbors as well. So, that's a quick overview. If you can answer any questions on the site, aspects of it that you might have. Brian can answer all your zoning questions.
Okay. I'll just start with one question. You talked about the road being designed 24 feet wide and also the cul-de-sac. Is that going to be, will you apply for the street acceptance for this?
No.
Okay.
This will be a private, this is a drive. This is not a road.
Okay.
This is not a public road, or it's really just an access drive.
But is the cul-de-sac designed to the standards that it could be accepted?
It is, yes.
So it's 102 feet, what's the distance across for it?
Eighty-four, eighty-four feet diameter. I think it's two feet shy of 86, which is a requirement of the planning board.
Okay.
And then with the berm, it's 88.
Okay, because of course, one of the things we'll look at, we'd be looking at is fire, you know, fire safety on this, so the fire chief is going to want to make sure that equipment is able to access.
We will meet with him. We have a traffic study that shows the swift path of a fire truck that can go around in the cul-de-sac, so we'll provide that to him and get his comments back to you on that.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have anything else to start?
Chairman, the previous house is a three-family. How many bedrooms are in that unit?
Seven.
Seven total bedrooms in a three-family? And how many bedrooms are proposed in this?
They're all, were they two-bedroom units?
Two or three.
Yeah, two to three.
Or four.
They're all designed with a first-floor master.
Okay.
And then they have like a second bedroom with a study loft area on the second floor. You have the house plans.
Yep. Okay. That's all I have for right now.
Mr. Chair, do we know if these are going to be rental or purchase?
For sale.
And then is there a condo association or anything like that to manage?
There will be a condo association, yes. There'll be for-sale units.
Okay.
So the association would maintain the drainage system, water, sewer, the roadway. Everything would be private. It's not a public road. There's no right-of-way. We're not creating a right-of-way, and we're not creating individual lots.
I have one more question. So you talked about the slope from the back units. You said it drops off about 20 feet?
Yeah, from up here down, yeah.
Right. So the four units that we can see right there in a row, are they going to be first-floor How's that going to work with the slope?
So you come in on the first floor, your driveway, and all that's up front, and then you have a walkout basement.
Okay.
So you drop from the driveway to the back is about a nine-foot drop, and then you'll have your second floor above. So the back would be technically three stories, except for the roof. You know, I don't know what the slopes look like on the roof. Do they come down in the back all the way, or are they all the way up to three stories?
We have them right here.
Yeah, you can get a look at that. Yeah, the four units in the back would have a full walkout basement.
Okay, but, well, the plans...
Probably doesn't show that on the plan.
Yeah, the plans that are being submitted to us show a bulkhead, so that's not really...
Yeah. We can get you a, we can get you a plan that shows what a walkout would look like with a rear elevation.
Okay, well, and the reason I'm asking this, because I think it matters for the neighbors that live behind, whether they're looking at, you know, a two-story structure or a three-story structure.
We'll get you a view of that, so you can see it, and they can see it.
Any other questions from the board before we open it? Yeah, Patrick?
So, I thought about it in a moment, so you'll probably need to get the access drive have a name. I'm not sure if you talked to fire about that.
Oh, for the drive, probably.
Yeah, it's probably going to happen. And then in the back, I notice you have a grass swale. In terms of landscaping, you know, it looks like you're kind of clear-cutting the existing tree line that's there. Are you proposing plantings in the back at all? It seemed that on the landscaping plan it was mostly...
Where's the landscaping? So I thought I put some back there.
Yeah. Put some aside.
I think we were going to...
Primarily on the side, not on the back.
Yeah, I think we would have those discussions with the neighbors. Kind of leaving that open-ended right now a little bit, but some people might want a fence or some landscaping, planting, so, yeah. But we did do the swale, as you saw.
Yeah.
We're bringing everything down to the recharge system, so no one gets any water.
But, to the point on the landscaping plan, that's probably going to be, we have a number of people here tonight.
I know.
So, I think one of the things that we'll have to work out after we hear their comments, and, you know, I had, I thought you said that you had, that the applicant had worked with the neighbors, but...
He has been, yes. He's had some meetings with them.
Okay.
And I'm sure we'll hear some more tonight, and like I said, we kind of left it open-ended in the back, and I've already, JT's already told me that there's a couple of on a fence, so some things might change between. And plus, this has to go to site plan as well, and we'll have a chance to even look at it some more, so.
So if there's no more questions from board members, what I'd like to do, do you have anything else to add at this time?
No, I don't.
Okay. I'd like to open it up to the public, so you can, you've seen the plans. If you have questions or comments, now's the time to let the board know what the concerns are.
I'm where it says Amy Diminasy. This is my family right here, we're at 67 Pleasant. We just bought our place in September, so we were not made aware of all of these plans when we did purchase. I've already spoken, John came by, we had a conversation. I have a very hard time reconciling the idea that this does not change the character of the neighborhood that we bought in, because it is completely a different neighborhood within a single-family. There are some multi-families. This is a completely different situation than the one home. It is going to be different when it comes to snow removal. This will be handled by an HOA now, so once all of this is done, the snow removal issues that happen in French drains that I've experienced personally, because I am one of those houses with a giant drop in the backyard, when we have a bunch of snow, that does become a problem, and it will become a problem in my backyard, which is very close to essentially where there is now a property 30 feet from my kitchen, where I have, you know, a lot of privacy right now. I have three small kids. We're all there. We've been told there could be a fence. We've been told there could be a berm, all of these things, but we're talking about a lot of noise pollution, the sound that's going to happen, suddenly having people looking into our backyard, looking like three stories with 30 feet from our home that we just purchased. These things feel like they're not being fully considered of the fact that it goes from a one building to six, and we've been told basically it doesn't make any sense for there to be any fewer homes. I'm concerned about the idea that you guys brought up, it might be an older community purchasing. I don't know many 65-plus communities where people are buying four-bedroom homes that are 3,000 square feet for $1.5 million in here. Like, it's just not making sense to me. I think there's going to be a lot of cars. It's going to be a lot more noise pollution, sound pollution. There's going to be more cars around, and it's going to completely change the character of the neighborhood, how it is right now. And it's just, I think it's very distressing for the neighbors. I have a neighbor next to me who lives next to me as well, who all of a sudden, there's essentially a home in our backyard. And I understand that these things change, neighborhoods change. It just seems to be a very big leap from one property to six. We're going to be dealing with drainage issues, we're coming downstream, it's right there in our backyard. So these are my general concerns about the project.
Have you met with the applicant and discussed things?
Yes, yeah.
But you mentioned a fence, and, because this is the time to, if, you know, this is the time to work those details out.
Sure.
As far as a fence, and I don't mean tonight, because, you know, there'll be, you know, at least one more meeting on this. You know, to, you know, where the fence would go, the height of the fence, would there be plantings and things like that?
Yeah, we walked the property line. We talked about trees, fences, a berm, basically how trees would take 20 years before it would be of any value to us behind our property, so something that would provide some sound. I know some people will provide, like the highway fencing, that helps with sound as well, something like that, because it's just going to be, feels like the four houses along the back especially, traffic lights, sound in our living rooms always, especially knowing that it's going to be, look like three stories doing so. So we did talk about it. There was nothing put in, we were told that putting a fence around the whole thing would be too cost prohibitive from the project, so I'm not sure if that's been reconsidered or if it's for certain parts, but that wasn't anything that we had discussed further.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just let you know is, I'm actually in the back here behind two newly-built houses. My house already floods from water, and they did bring their attention that they're going to put oversized drainage to help compensate any water. They might come down the road, go into my backyard, because I already flooded the bottom of my house multiple times. The other thing I brought up to attention was, it's going to be a 65-plus area, like she was mentioning, for that many rooms for them, and they have to drag their trash barrels all the way to the top of the street. So you're expecting elderly people now to also drag their trash barrels. So I already said, you know what, this is going to turn into a whole different thing once it passes the board. That was my concern.
Okay, so, that's actually a good question. What's going to be the trash service on this?
I'm sure. The other ones we've done in town have been private pickup, like in driveways, in people's barrels, and the association, if the fire association would be...
Okay, okay. That's, so that would be a homeowner association thing that, again...
Yeah, I'm just mentioning stuff that gets overlooked during the...
Oh, I agree, and I think that's a good point, and even, usually we have like the dumpster pad of, if it was a bigger development, you know...
I did bring that attention, it's like, oh, there's, it will be eventually a dumpster put somewhere down in this area off the site, which maybe this little corner over here, eventually it'll probably, like, whatever it is, as is, I mean, it's just a lot, plus me being back here, already flooding, which hopefully those pumps do not fail, and I can also get the extra water, because electrical pumps will fail. It's electrical, it just happens. So my big concern is I don't need that extra non-grass to take in all that extra water, plus the roofs. That's a lot more flat surface than stuff that actually absorbs water, like the grass that's already there.
Okay.
So that's my concern about this whole build. And like I said, I brought the attention that the homeowners is going to probably, that's up to them, but, you know, I wouldn't want to be 80 years old buying a rental house for a million and a half and having to truck my trash barrels to the shop.
Okay, point taken. Thank you.
Good evening. Ed Conner, 8 Albert Court, right near the unit three that they're deciding to build there. I grew with my neighbor who's to my left. There is no ground cover there for trees. If there is, the trees are 60 feet high, so there's no branches. My main concern is the runoff of the water from how the storage is set up, how the drainage comes from the rooftops, from the gutters, and there is a slope from that land going down into my yard, as with Michael. Mike's my neighbor on the right side, so we both have water issues, and I think, I've lived there 50 years, and I'm pretty comfortable with my privacy issues, and this is going to be a little turnaround for me. I don't agree with it totally, but today is what it is. But, I don't think you need this many houses in that area. I do think they need privacy. I think they do need a fence, which they said was cost prohibitive. They mentioned, we mentioned trees on that side of the property, which is where that, on the things I saw on the computer, it said old building, old find. It's actually an 18-foot building, 18 feet long, it's about 20 feet high, it's made of stone, it's got a fireplace in it, and of course, the foundation. I don't know whether they need any permits to get rid of that or not. That's going to affect how they dig and how they build in that particular area. I don't know if it carries any historical value with the town, but I'm really concerned with the drainage and the privacy issues that come with this building. And like I said, it's going to be two stories high, and I have a rans, so I can't look into my windows, so I have nothing to worry about, but privacy is a big issue, as is the drainage. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Cormier. I live at 130 Union Street, the adjacent house. My wife did meet at one of the meetings, the most recent one, and expressed some concerns. But I would agree that this is not in any way similar to the nature of the neighborhood. You know, they're mostly single-family or single-building homes, they may be multifamily, but there's nothing like this anywhere close to this property, as far as this many homes on such a small property, creating a cul-de-sac neighborhood on an acre and a half of land is, to me, completely out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. I have a few specific concerns. There's already mention about snow storage. With my property pretty, pretty close to this property line, I'm concerned about, you know, snow being pushed on one side of the, of this entrance drive, and the runoff coming into my yard. The, I'm also concerned about, I have several trees along this property line. I'm concerned about root systems being damaged when putting this road in, as well as this detention or the drainage basin. The back corner, the grating just simply doesn't work. The back corner of my property is at grade one-twenty-eight. There's a one-twenty-nine contour within a foot or two, so there'd almost be a forty-five-degree angle right at the back of my property line. It just doesn't work back here. Also, I'm concerned about this recharge system being close to my property. I understand the soil drainage is good, but if it's getting flooded with quite a bit of runoff from the road, that it could, you know, I have a stone foundation, I'm concerned about so much water being pumped into the ground that it starts to create, you know, basement flooding problems for me. This back corner is wet in my basement, so I'm concerned about putting more water in the ground right next to it, especially during, during high rainfall events. Somebody already mentioned the height of it, you know, this is at the top of a hill. So, you know, most of our houses aren't super-big houses, these, I'm concerned about being very tall, they get the square footage they want. And, you know, at the top of a hill, it's gonna, it's gonna, I think they're gonna be pretty large buildings. I'm also concerned about, you know, the three-story that someone already mentioned in the, facing the back. Let's see, what else? Oh, I understand that, that, you know, there's a front and back and side offsets. However, this is my backyard, and this driveway's within feet of my property line. The driveway in the house is within twenty feet, and I understand that they may consider it a side property line here, but to me, it's my backyard, it's supposed to be thirty feet, so really sixty feet between, between the two, and I'm just concerned this is too close to the back property line. I also am concerned that it's a pretty complex drainage system, and I'm not sure how well homeowner associations maintain those, but there'd have to be a pretty, pretty serious maintenance plan for these, because if they stop working, there's gonna be a huge drainage issue. I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm over here, Ryan Connors. At the last meeting that we had with John and Brian, we talked a lot about what property would be and how it was going to look, and I think I can echo all of my neighbors' sentiments in saying that this does change the outlook of the neighborhood. Also, as a schoolteacher in another district, I can say that, without knowing for sure if this is gonna be a fifty-five-plus community, having that many homes in such a tight space adding to the number of individuals who could be going to school, even if it is a fifty-five-plus community, we can still have that many more individuals. People live with multi-generational families all the time now. And at the last meeting, we did talk a lot about fences and different things for the privacy. I guess one of my questions, and I was just speaking to someone, they said I should come to a planning board meeting, is how do we know that those things are gonna be followed through with, like they were talked about, but how do we know that they'll actually happen? And then is there anything that gets written into the condo association to say, like, if a fence does go up, that then they are responsible for maintaining the fence? Just as in a butter, these are things that I'm curious about. And the water. But everyone has mentioned that one. Thank you.
Do you want the answer?
Sure.
So, the zoning board, if we were to issue a decision, we would put conditions on it. And those conditions could state things like, you know, a six-foot white, you know, vinyl fence. And, you know, so those things all get conditioned, and it also says in it that they are to be maintained by the owner, the current owner, and then in perpetu-, forever by the, the next owner, or the homeowners association. So that, there are mechanisms and tools that, you know, if it's a part of the decision, then that's, that's what has to be built. It's not like they get approval and then they go do what they want. They have to follow the conditions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. And that includes landscaping and things like that?
Right.
Good evening. Jerry Mulligan. I live at 104 Union Street, adjacent to the 112 property. Been a resident there for seventeen years. Prior to the sale of the house, the previous owner did a significant amount of tree removal, I would say, within a year or two of selling the property. I would say they removed a few trees in this area. I'd say on total, it was probably fifteen trees that have been fifty years old, thirty to fifty years old. So there's a large swath that comes through here, where you can see from Union Street down to, to Albert Court as it is. And when those trees came down, there was discussion in the neighborhood. That was previous to the new owner, unrelated to what they're looking to do. But when that work was done and those trees were removed, it impacted that, the feel of why we bought in East Walpole, in that area. So although I don't have water concerns, because I'm not in the back, this property lines, I'd say, three hundred and sixty feet that we share. My concern would be privacy between the two properties. John and I met, he came over and introduced himself when he first bought the property. We walked the property, we talked about plantings, a fence. I would be interested in a privacy fence between the two properties, because my land also drops down. This unit, I think, is eleven feet from the property line, which we may meet all the bylaws, but the impact to the existing properties, I think, needs to be considered. Had good conversations with John, he's been good to work with so far. But I think I would like to see a fence there, I'd like to see that in an HOA. Also, the orientation of the house off of Union Street. When you come down Union Street, obviously you're facing, all the, all the front doors of the house face the street. If this plan was to go through, I understand that the orientation of this house wouldn't be facing the street. I think that dressing the front of this up with possibly a berm or additional plantings that don't seem to be shown here, to kinda soften seeing the side of a two-story house, you know, I don't think twisting the house to avoid that is something that they could do, but I think additional planting so that you're coming down, it doesn't look like this just happened, right? A lot of those houses have been there for, my house has been there since fifty-seven. There's houses that have been there longer. I think we need to, whatever the plan does go through, it needs to look, it's not gonna look like it's been original, but we don't wanna look like it just happened, right? And I think some of the things that should go into the HOA would be that trash removal is considered, that, you know, a dumpster location is, is not something that, that could be changed down the road. And also, I'd like to hear a little bit about the snow removal. Is it, is the water retention just for rainwater? Or does that include if you were to get, you know, four feet of snow over the course of the winter or something like that? I don't know if that's all built into that study. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want the answer on the storm, the snow? Do you wanna explain?
The systems are designed for the snow to melt and go into the, into the catch basins, into the drainage system. So the back unit as well is, I do have a catch basin in the corner, with a little berm around here so that the water can't get off the site. So if things melt, there's a swale on the back. Everything comes down to this corner at the end of the day. I mean, everything in the roadway and up here will get into the drainage system up here. But like this stuff in the back, as it melts, it will go into the system as well. So we put some safeguards in, they put that berm in, have an open catch basin there. So if water does come down, if the berms are two or three feet high, it'll trap, catch that water, send it into that catch basin and back into the drainage system. But we do, you know, the snow is considered rain. It's still water. It's just a snowstorm. We still look at it like eight and a half inches of water, and a storm is a lot of water. So that's what we're designed on. The old storms are only seven inches. You know, with the storms we've had today, we've increased all that. Because of these flash floods we get, we get these two-inch storms in a two-hour period. So, and the other thing is, we will not have a dumpster on the site. There's not gonna be a dumpster pad fenced in dumpster. That's, it'll be individual trashes, trash cans. Whether they work something out with the town, they have a fee to pay to the town for that pickup, which I don't think the town has a fee, but these projects, generally what you do is just hire a private pickup. They come in just like they pick up for the town, they grab the barrels, they dump them in the dumpster. I don't think anyone in that neighborhood would want a dumpster fenced in. It's just gonna be, as you know, dumpsters tend to have trash hanging around them, stuff blowing around the yard. I don't think that's something we wanna put in the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation about the drainage.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I had a couple more things.
Sure.
I'd like to reintroduce myself, am I good?
You can reintroduce yourself.
Joe Cormier, 130 Union Street. One thing about the snow is, snow is typically pushed off the road. So the Cape Cod berm is meant to keep water in the road to get to the catch basins. If all the snow is outside the road, then it's not gonna make it to the catch basins at all, except for maybe the one in the back corner. So I'm not sure if that explanation really works. I understand there's a swale that's intended to be around the property, but I have, you know, it's one thing to draw it on a plan, it's another thing to actually have it constructed that way. I'd have some pretty serious concerns of, with a pretty narrow space to have adequate berm, adequate swale to be installed there. And lastly, I'm surprised there's not erosion and sanitation control along our property line, because the adjacent property is higher than ours. So I'm surprised where it's only going around the back and not along our property line. Thanks.
So if any work were to be done, would you put erosion control around the whole property? Okay. Board members, any questions? Anybody else? Okay, yeah. Mr. Connor.
Have you seen pictures of the foundation that's supposedly there on the property?
In the back?
Unit three?
No.
May I show you this?
Sure. Oh, okay.
There's some more there too, showing it. There isn't work there, you can see pictures in my window. There's also a picture of the foundations. The other thing, imagine the snow, and I know that Mike and I was, when you have a lot of snow and it gets cold, and if then it gets warm, it rains, with that slope, because the snow was frozen, and like you said, the, the snow was rain. Well, this rain came down, excuse me, down from the slope, down along the property, and all the way around, unfortunately, to Mike's property. And that slope is, is not going to accommodate a lot of water. And again, I'm back into the, into the drainage and everything else. But there was another thing that bothered me. Initially, I wasn't able to make the first meeting, but the first set of drawings showed six houses on one end, on the side of Mr. Mulligan's property. And then the next meeting that I went to, there was, there was a change of two to four. Sorry, I might not have breath here. My, my concern is, at any later date in time, can they build where they were gonna build before? Is that an option? Is that something they can go back to the board for?
So...
Is this gonna be, is there a stage two in this phase? Or can there be one, I guess, is the question.
Well, there could be, and what we actually hope in this, this design project, in this process, that the applicant is gonna go back, gonna meet with you, you know, the neighbors, address some of these issues. So oftentimes, what we see tonight is not the final, this is not the final project. But the zoning board, whatever, if something is approved, that's what's approved. It's, it's a stamped plan, it's signed, it's voted on, and that's what gets approved. So, you know, we expect during the, the hearing process, things change a little bit.
Okay.
Does that answer it? But once, if something's approved, that's it. That's, that's what they, they agree that that's what's gonna be built.
There's a lot of work to be done on that piece of property where they're gonna put unit three, because of that foundation, the bricks, and the dead trees, and all the old trees that are there that, you know, have nothing on them but dead branches. All right, thank you.
John?
Just for clarification?
Yes.
You were referring to a couple of concept plans we had done prior to submission.
Do you want to just come to the microphone, please?
We had done a couple of concept plans that Mr. Walsh had shared with the neighbors, and the first one was the road went in straight, came down here, and the cul-de-sac was actually over here, and all the houses were in a row. So we went back to, you know, we thought this was a better plan, road's smaller, less pavement, and these houses block the headlights. When people do come down the road, there was another thought we had. It just breaks it up instead of looking like a straight row of houses. So we thought this was a little better layout, and this is what you're seeing today. You never saw the other one. It never came before you.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Sorry.
Yeah.
Can you identify, are there similar properties within this area that share the same volume of individual houses on that size of lot?
I cannot.
You do that for the next meeting, so we can just compare? Because that's part of the, the request, right, is that it's in harmony with...
Give you like a neighborhood of what this house is, what that...
I mean, I guess the basis of why you're proposing six units on, on this parcel.
Okay.
The other question I have is, you have two houses or units proposed that are facing not Union Street currently? Can you describe, again, part of that same zoning bylaw speaks to the building placement being in harmony? I guess, turning the face of the houses opposite to what the street is? How is that, fit that narrative, I guess?
Okay.
And while I'm at that, you've got two driveways that are facing somebody's houses. That was not the case before that, you know, right? And you show no screening, screens, sure, where you're screening to that property. Just a couple of comments. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm gonna reiterate the bit about, if somebody drives down, if this plan were approved, as shown, somebody drives down Union Street, they're gonna be looking at...
Side of a house.
The side of a house, whereas every other house, they're looking at the front of the house, and...
The planting plant has all maple trees on it.
Oh, in the front. I mean, there are plantings out there, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah, right. But I think, I think Delaney's talking about...
We have the maple trees along the street, but I, I understand what you're saying. So maybe we can take a look at the architectural of that and make that not look like the side of a house. I've seen people do that in the past, in other places, maybe something we could do architecturally to change that look. You're not just looking at a big wall.
If I might add, if we do something like that, we would probably need a variance for the front steps. We could do like a port, we could add a portago on the side of the house and make it look like the front of the house, but change the scope of what we're here with.
So I guess I look at the fact that it says, this... So I guess I look at the fact that it says, the 6C4A speaks to the fact that it says "in harmony with the building placement of the abutting neighborhood." Show me another neighbor that has a house facing sideways, not facing Union Street. That doesn't seem like it's harmony to me. So, but I'll wait for your response.
Okay. I was just also going to mention, JT, you mentioned if you, if you had to put a doorway, I guess, facing Union Street. I mean, it, obviously, I'm not looking at it right now, but you're allowed to have, if it's a mean of access, it does not impact within being in the setback. And now, obviously, you're allowed to go within four feet into it. So I don't know what the design would be for a portico, but you may not need additional relief if you, if you do put an access there.
Well, actually, I think that that's also point, pointing out that there's a lot being jammed into this, that you, that unit one is right on the, right on the line, on the setback line, thirty-foot setback line, whereas, you know, you look at the other houses in the neighborhood, and those are not, you know, at the, they are not at the, the thirty-foot line. So that talks about the, the harmony of the neighborhood, so I think that also points to that. Seems like a lot is being put into a relatively small area. Okay. I think there's a lot of work you still need to do. I understand the drainage, I, I understand the neighbors' concerns, I also understand as an engineer, you, you've designed this to handle the water.
Correct.
But I think it's a lot of, what, what's going to matter is the vegetated buffers, fence, and things to protect the neighbors, as we've seen in other developments in town.
I think we've heard that tonight.
Yeah. Okay. You've, you've heard that tonight.
Yeah.
So I think there's, there's some work, work to do on it. And, you know, I think hopefully some more meetings, and you can come back with a plan that addresses a number of the neighbors' concerns. And, you know, what I have in my notes, neighbors' concerns about snow, you know, snow removal, drainage, privacy, the house facing Union Street. We even heard about headlights, but I also recognize that part of what you tried to do is protect the houses, the neighbors in the back by placement of those houses, so... Do board members have other things that they want looked at?
Yeah, just one, one comment through you, Mr. Chair. You know, just given, given the density of, of this compared to the prior house, I think it would certainly look better for, for the board if any of the houses were, were affordable, just given where, where, where we are in the state. I realize this is not a 40B, but it certainly would make me look better on it if, if any part of it was, was met the affordable guidelines. Just, just throwing that out there, just given the density.
Anything else from somebody? Okay. So, oh, yes.
Judy Conroy, 455 Elm Street. I just wanted to make sure you get the design plans for the rear view of the three stories. My concern is the contours, and I can't read those small numbers, but it looked like 120 at the base, at the, at the back property line. And so 120 to add a three-story home, take a ride around East Wallpole. Burns Ave in particular, the homes are towering over the neighborhood, towering. And they're three stories, they're just like this. So if you could just see those plans, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to continue the hearing?
Yes.
Some work to do, hopefully revise plans, meet with the neighbors, try to address these issues so that, come up with a better plan. And I think that's, I think it was Mr. Connor who asked the bit about, you know, is this the final plan? Well, it's, might be close to it, but there's probably adjustments that need to be done to make it better for, for everybody, including anybody that would live in this development in the future. So when would you like to continue to? Yeah. What, what's the January date?
January 4.
Or do you want more time than January, or what's your...
No, I have January 4.
January 7.
Yeah, we're working with the architect, trying to work some things out.
Okay. So, January 7? Do you want to, does that work for you folks, everybody?
Yes.
Do you have a procedural que, a question? Yeah.
Just a question, would it be possible to get a, a rendering of the, of the proposal in C2, like actual rendering onsite? Like a 3D rendering?
Oh, like a 3D rendering?
Are you the architect? No, 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 this... Yeah.
Oh, no, I, I don't have the ability.
Okay. Okay.
I don't...
Okay.
I know someone can do it for you.
Well, well, so, so what the board has asked for is, we have these, and you have them, you know, everybody's seen these, these plans that were provided, but that's not what the, that's not what the rear view is going to look like to, you know, to, you know, the, to the neighbors on our record. We, I've, I've said that early on, so, yeah, we need, we need, but, you know, a actual, I, I don't know if we're at that point where the applicant is going to be able to show for this site what it would look like.
I think the point about Burns Ave is a good one, that, you know, driving through there, the houses are gigantic compared to others around it, talk about the character of a neighborhood. And I think having a 3D rendering would be very helpful in understanding what it looks like compared to the surrounding properties.
Might be good to get that for the next meeting as opposed to having the board require that for the follow-on hearing. Okay. Anything else on this before we make a motion to continue? Okay. Actually, we don't need a motion, just, okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to continue until January 9th, 7 o'clock here at Town Hall?
Seven.
January 7.
So moved.
January 7.
Second.
Been moved by Drew, second by Shane. Any further discussion on continuing this hearing until January...
Seven.
Seven. At seven.
January 7, 7 p.m.
Here at Town Hall.
You got it.
Seven, at seven. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, staying so there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So next we have...
Where's everybody going? I'm sorry.
You don't need those pictures, Dan.
Okay. So this, next we have a discussion and vote, possible vote on determining whether the change is being proposed by the applicant for the sanctuary on East, which is the, we sometimes refer to it as the Gilmore property or 1015 East Street. So the applicant is back before us with some changes to what was approved and a request for some modifications, so, good evening.
Chairman, it's nice to see you, nice to see the board. It's been a minute. For the record, Jeff Engler from KIG Silver Strand Wallpole LLC, representing the applicant. We appreciate you entertaining our request this evening. What we plan to do is, we're just going to run through the proposed modifications. Nothing we're showing on the screen tonight is, is, it's already before you. We just thought it would be helpful to show it visually and talk about it to the extent there's any questions. I'm joined tonight by Eric DeBruel from Bowler, our civil engineer, Steve Regal from Embark, who will, from, who will be talking about some of the architectural changes, Sean Henry, who's part of the construction and development team. So we brought the, the full team here tonight, should, should there be any kind of technical questions on anything that's proposed. But basically, in summary, we've been hard at work on this project since we were last before you. I don't know what exactly it's been, call it a year and a half or so. And as customary, when moving from schematic drawings into construction level detail, we're looking at ways to not only enhance the project, but also there's things relative to building code compliance and just efficiency of space. And that's really all that's before you. We believe, as the request has represented, that these are all insubstantial, substantial changes, minor changes, if you will, within the context of 40B. With that said, we're, we want to run through them with you tonight and answer any questions. And just to simplify, basically, we resubmitted an engineering plan, an architectural plan, and a signage package, and we just want that to be considered the planned set of record as opposed to the plans that you approved, you know, what, a year and a half ago. And the only difference between those plans and the ones you approved are the things that we're going to be talking about tonight. So there's not other things kind of under the covers. This is it, they're minor in our opinion, but with that said, we're going to walk you through what we're asking for. It was all included in the November 5th letter that we submitted, but as I said, we thought it would be helpful. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Steve first. I'm just going to sit over here and flip the slides, and if there, if there are any questions as we go, feel free to shout them out, or we can take questions after each presenter, and then we'll wrap it up after we've gone through everything. So does anybody have any questions before we start to go through the presentation?
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to, as you said, shout out questions as we have them or hold them to the end?
I'd go with the shout out.
Shout out.
You know I'm going to go with the shout out.
I think, I also think that's better. I think that's better for understanding what's, what's going on, so...
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much. Steve Regal, Embark, we are the architect for the project. I'm going to go through the seven bullet pit, bullet points that were for the architectural items before I turn it over to our civil engineer. So the first one is, is through the course of the project, we were able to gain an additional three interior parking spaces within the garage. Now, these are what's known as tandem spaces. And so if you look at plan, plan right bottom, you'll see that we have this sort of six-pack of spaces. The three at the rear are the additional, they would be considered tandem spaces, they would be the last spaces used, they would be managed. We have a number of three bedrooms and two bedrooms that may have a need for more than one vehicle. If we did not get the increase improved, that area would just go to building storage or something like that. If we could go to the first floor, Jeff? I think the biggest change that you guys are going to see is, is again, in the, the bottom right of the first floor plan, when we had originally come to you, we had a indoor swimming pool, a year-round swimming pool. Through feedback and various discussion about liability, use, the appropriateness for a pool in a building of this size, the project team decided to make a pivot and to repurpose that space as an outdoor covered amenity space with various uses that the landscape architect can sort of run through later. I would say that was the sort of biggest change. With it, we also took an opportunity to reorganize some of the first floor amenity spaces, still keeping the original concept that they would face on the Main Street in order to keep everything engaged. But the big move really was, is we took the fitness center from plan upper left, and we moved it down to plan lower right so that it's closer to our golf simulator, our social club, and our outdoor amenity. Now, what that did do was, is that allowed us some more space in order to start to max out the work from home. We looked at the market and the types of people that we expect to be here, and not only do we think that, you know, these spaces would be made available to the public, but we also consider that a lot of these offices would be rented to tenants as well. So we really took that, that WeWork, and we increased the square footage of that. Bullet point four is just regarding the unit mix. Initially, we had submitted with 16 studio units, and we have since converted 11 of those to one-bedroom units. We found that in this market, 16, 16 studios were going to be really hard to bring online, be it a perception issue or just the type of tenancy that we expected. But there is no impact to the number of beds, there's no impact to the number of plumbing fixtures, or there's no impact to parking. What it really comes down to is, instead of having a sleeper sofa, someone now has a sofa and a separate bedroom. But we still have six stu, five studio units, which we believe is appropriate for this, this tenancy. Bullet point five is rather insignificant, there's just been a minor reduction in the building size that's occurred through the design development process, so it's gotten 700 feet, you know, smaller.
Not the height, no.
No. And then two more items, just the, the bike storage. You know, we, we repurposed some of the area on the first floor for our electric room and a maintenance office, and so we've moved some of the bike storage to the garage, and we also have six bike parking spaces directly out front at the main entry. And then final, bullet to, bullet, bullet point seven, we'll actually be withdrawing. It was the request to add a rooftop generator to the project. Through further discussion, we found other ways in order to, you know, meet the intent and found that, yes, we'd like, we're withdrawing our request to add the generator to the project, so... Those were the seven bullet points. I can stop here, or I can turn it over to the civil engineer.
Well, I think those are all, you know, reasonable and part of your design process, so I, I get it. Does anybody have any questions or concerns, Judy?
What's the square footage of the studio apartments, again?
Six are changed, I think. We could definitely get that for you.
I think it's about 665 square feet, and the one beds are probably 780. 750 to 780.
Okay. And I have my notes here, you mentioned some storage available, private storage to tenants of the building only.
Oh, so I'm sorry, that was, that was referring to office space, not storage? Office space?
It's not storage now?
No, there'll be no, there'll be some storage in the project for tenants only, but the WeWork, the east sheet, east suite, this section up here, this was originally our sort of WeWork, and we've since recaptured the space from the fitness, so we have a more comprehensive set of individual offices that can be leased out to either tenants or the outside public. So this has been set up from a security standpoint to also serve the outside, which I think was the original intent as a review.
That, that's all true. I, I think maybe what you're asking about is what was not also originally shown. If you look in the upper right, that's all tenant, that's all tenant private storage.
Where is that on the plan, sir?
On the upper right. So those are like lockers or different spaces that tenants can lease if they have additional storage beyond what they want to put. So instead of going to like U-Haul or public storage, you have a small space that you can lease right at the property.
And, and the storage areas will meet all fire codes, and I have a concern of what tenants do put in storage because I've got a little experience in that area where people put propane tanks and...
We'll be beholden to all, all fire codes. The fire, you know, department is very, we have not yet filed for a building permit, but when we will, I'm sure that'll be closely looked at, but we expect no leniency relative to any of those conditions.
And these are, the reason they dashed is, is because they're not included in the base contract, but the idea is that they're either a prefabricated open unit, so people can actually see what's in there, or they're open top, which allows full sprinkler coverage. The other thing is, is we're going to... The other thing is, is we're gonna have cameras to cover the door and the aisles of the room, so if there's any funny business, that's gonna be, you know, caught as well.
Yeah, and then, who monitors what actually goes in, as far as its furniture or other things?
I think there's a management established in certain, sure.
I mean, it'll be, it'll be managed by a professional property manager, and there'll be restrictions relative to what can and can't be stored.
Okay.
But as, you know, customary, you know, you're not gonna be able to store like propane, I think that's probably where you're going now, or something like this.
I mean, it happens.
But, yeah, and these are not voluminous storage spaces.
Well, if they're dashed, they look, yeah, it looks, yeah.
They're, they're fairly small, so people aren't gonna be storing couches, and you know, it's gonna be Home Depot bins and, you know, winter clothes, seasonal stuff.
Right, okay.
Golf clubs, that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
I think I heard you say the, the shared offices?
Yes, sir.
Could be leased out?
Yes.
So, you're talking about commercial use for that area?
So, if you recall, the town, particularly the Board of Selectmen, really wanted us to have public space for not just the tenants, so we have enhanced the, we've called it WeWork, that's, it's not, you know, branded WeWork, but basically what it is, is it's publicly available work-from-home spot, even if you don't live there, you can go and you can rent a spot either on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis. You can leave things, you can lock it up, you'll have Wi-Fi, you'll have other things. So, that's available to the, to the public, so somebody walking down the street, a Walpole resident, can go in, and, and that was, that was not our choice, that was the Board of Selectmen wanting that. So, but also, our tenancy has the same opportunity as well.
So, it's a finished area?
Yes.
That would be sub-leased by people to use it?
Yeah, I mean...
I guess my, my fear or thought, and, and, you know, correct me if you're proposing something different, is like the many other buildings you see in the immediate neighborhood that have vacancies throughout on their first floor, and I just am wondering, is that what we're talking about for this to be?
Well, hopefully not, but, I mean, you know, it, it's all finished space.
Okay.
So, if an office is not rented, it's not a big deal, it just is open. What I would, a, a spot I looked at recently, and, and some more kind of retailers are going in this direction, but actually Staples, you know, has a, has use much bigger than what we're talking about, but it's all finished offices, there's some common area, you know, fridge, blah, so you, you feel like you're in an office setting, but you're not, you know, you're just renting a space, and you, you have bigger office, smaller office, so that's kind of the model.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
There would be no intent for a longer-term kind of commercial lease?
No, absolutely, it's not set up for that, no, but we couldn't have a, a law firm come in and say, we, you know, we're taking the whole thing.
Obviously, that would, that would be a different use.
No.
I have a question.
Actually, I think it's to your, your point, I wanna talk about the studios being converted into, into one-bedrooms, and it looks like 11 studios are going to be converted into one-bedrooms, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we say converted, but it's, it's, when we came to you before, they were studios, and, so yeah, now, now they're one-bedrooms, yes.
But the size of them also goes from, I think it was 660 up to 780, I think I heard?
611 to 695 on page two.
Okay, six, wait, 611?
We don't have a second floor on this here.
If you look in the packet here, they have a, say, the schedule of what the square footage is by unit.
So, I'm trying to figure out, where'd you find this extra square footage?
Oh, it's an excellent point. So, when we first started a project and our owner wants to, you know, max out the units, we gotta leave ourselves a little bit of leeway, and a lot of times, we have to commit to a unit count and unit mix well before we've gone through and done all the MEP coordination and made sure this person had the right-sized room and that person didn't. So, I generally try and set my projects up in a way that, as the project develops, I claw back space, and so that's basically what we were able to do. We were able to claw back enough space to, you know, add a couple hundred square foot to a studio, to now give, you know, to now make it a one-bedroom. We don't expect anyone additional to be living there, no change in plumbing fixture count, no change in parking, it's really just a style of living.
Are you gross where footage is left?
For the total project, yes, yes.
So, just so, I'm clear, when, when we approved this, and I'm not being, because I understand the way these projects go, we approved something, and it was like a, say, 98% solution on that, and now you've gone back and redesigned, and you've...
Yes, and, and honestly, if you, if you guys, you know, didn't approve it, we would take the wall down between the living room and the bedroom, and, you know, that would be the concept of a studio still, so...
That's not what I'm talking about.
Mr. Chairman, I know what you're getting at. I would say the, the plan that you approved is, was schematic, as is customary, and it was not 98%. What we've done now is, from the time we were approved to now, we've really closely studied the units and the sizing, and the bedroom sizing, and the, and the common area, and now they're exactly what we want. Before, we had a box, so I think if you went through all our units, and I have not done this, that one unit's lost 10 square feet, one unit lost 15, one, you know, so over the course of the total density, it's just kind of a reallocation, if you will, so I think a lot of units are, are, you know, more efficiently designed, and in some cases have shrunk, just to be quite candid. The bedrooms have not changed dramatically, but some of the unit sizes are. And I'll, and I'll be totally candid and transparent, 'cause we have that relationship. We originally filed, you know, for 145 units as part of our modification, when 142 units was approved, and we thought that was gonna be no big deal, and, you know, it's three units, the building footprint, nothing. Long story short, it was not well-received by the Board of Selectmen, but we had already kind of done a lot of things, so that's why we have somehow storage and some other, you know, more enhanced spaces, because we had to take three units out. So, we had some more space to put to one-bedrooms from studios. So, it's really a whole evolution from taking a schematic where we had boxes and a general idea. We're really tight now, we're real, these are what we wanna build, we're ready to, we're pretty close to filing for a building permit, so that's kind of how, where the square footage came from, if that makes sense.
Thank you for the explanation.
I just have one more question. Have you assigned the affordable units, the numbers and the percentages, as far as studio?
Well, the percentages, as you know, are, are required, and we're in the process of seeking final approval from what's now, it used to be DHCD when we started, now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, we've submitted a draft plan identifying the affordable units that has not been, actually, it has not been submitted, but they'll be the arbiter of where those are, but as you know, they're, the affordable units have to be spread throughout the building, they have to be spread on every floor, they can't be stacked, they gotta be proportionate, so in other words, we can't have, I mean, what do we have, 38 affordable units here, I think? We can't have thirty, you know, 38 one-bedrooms, it's gotta be proportionate to the mix. So, that's a long-winded way of saying we're in process, but it has not been approved yet.
Just to, to add to that, I know for the comprehensive permit, it's a requirement prior to building permit, so that information...
The final approval from, from Housing and Livable Communities is a prerequisite to us being able to get a building permit, so we'll have that before we file for our building permit. And we, and I also think it's stipulated, we share that with, with the town, so that application, you guys will see what that is.
That's what I was gonna ask, will we see that before you apply for your building permit?
Yeah.
Or could we please?
Concurrent, yes.
Concurrent, okay.
It's a move to Summer Street, when they go to file, all that paperwork's provided to us beforehand, as the case file.
Right, thank you.
All right, Eric. Okay. One last question. Will there be a, a new drawing set with the removal of the generator?
Yes, that will be filed for permit, and if it's required by this board, we can provide...
Well, it'll be referenced in our decision, right?
Yeah. It would, to be honest, the, the best way for you to probably move forward would be to have a revised plan, unless there's a reason not to, so that when, whatever we approve, that's what you're going forward with.
Just to show that there's no generator.
Yeah, to show, to, to show what we're approving, and it sounds like, if the generator's not going on the roof, where's it going?
I, I just have to check to see if we showed the generator on the initial approvals, because we were coming back to have it added, because I believe the drawings...
The generator?
Do we show it in the current set?
The generator was definitely not shown on the approved set, and it was something that we thought we needed as part of our, you know, modification in working with our code consultant, our general contractor, it's been determined, we actually don't need the generator, so is, is it, is it shown on?
We'll, we'll double-check.
Yeah, we'll double-check.
We'll double-check what you guys have.
But, we, we definitely do not need it.
So, it's shown on the plan we have right here, that you've submitted?
Revised plan it is.
So, right. And, and just so, we're all clear, there's no generator, you're not gonna have a generator?
So, we're the board to hopefully approve these modifications, we can submit, you know, an updated plan set for the record that omits the generator.
Or maybe we just submit actually that one sheet, rather than resubmit, however we do it.
Yeah, what, just so it's clear, what's, what you're moving forward with, that's, I mean...
Board is not approved.
Yeah, we put some green space.
I don't think that's up for discussion right now.
Yes, I don't care.
It's a good idea, I like it.
I wasn't here for the chip sales, but...
Good evening, for the record, Eric DeBruel, professional engineer with Bowler Engineering. I'm gonna talk to the bullet points, starting on page four, under Civil and Landscaping. I just wanna reiterate what Jeff had mentioned, much of these enhancements are just the evolution going from the entitlement-level drawings to towards construction-level drawings. Starting with the first one, if I can zoom in a touch on that, see if that's gonna break stuff.
I think we're all just trying to get to the right page here. Is that C, what?
C 701, what's the middle back half, what's that? That'll do. Okay. Everyone set? Perfect. All right, so the first bullet, the, the front of the building, the front setback is a zero-foot required setback, it was approved at six, 6.6 feet, and we're essentially proposing to bring the building one foot closer in that front bottom-right corner of the building to 5.5 feet, and the, the reason behind that was, the structural column in that area just needed to grow a little bit, so it's very much imperceptible on the plan and as it, as it's gonna be built, but we wanted to point that out. And again, code compliant is, is up to zero feet, so it's still by right-front setback, but did wanna point that out. Plan left, there are two transformers there, previously was approved with one much larger transformer, just further coordination with the utility company, their preferences have two smaller transformers to support this project, so again, very same area, just split in two, into two smaller transformers in that location. The next three bullets on page five are all to do with landscaping, I'm gonna take those a little bit out of order. The first I'm gonna go to is the, the outdoor grill and patio area. Steve talked to the amenity spaces attached to the building, see where Jeff is highlighting there in the plan. So, where Jeff's highlighting, there's an indoor/outdoor amenity space, attached to that, closer to the street, is an outdoor grill area with patio. It's previously proposed with shrubs and plantings, we're still proposing those same amount of plantings and the same configuration, but we're able to add in, again, that outdoor grill area, just to enhance that area with some additional amenity space. The second bullet down, at the top-right part of the page, previously approved, there was a, what we call the flexible amenity space. What it showed there was some pavers, a table with some seating, and then some plantings around that area. We found that to be a little bit redundant with all the additional amenity space that we were able to get at the building, to have that additional space. We thought it would be better to have a dog park, so it's, now we're proposing a fenced-in dog park area, so additional amenity for, for the tenants, and we've also found in practice that having a, a space to have dogs use the restroom is much better than having them go out to the community and the neighborhood, and not saying residents would not pick up after the pet, but it's a much easier way to manage pet waste. And then, the top bullet, again, just based on the refinements to some of these areas, the landscape schedule, the, the planting schedule has changed a little bit, the same amount of trees, shade trees, things of that nature is all the same, still over 650 plantings throughout, so it really hasn't changed, except for those areas, but if you looked at the two scheduled, you'd, you'd notice some differences there, just generally based on that. So, we just wanted to point out there was some minor refinements to the, the planting plan, but again, it's still very robust throughout, and over 650 plantings in both approved and in this modified set. Protective bollards, that's that fourth one down, so if you're coming from the dog park, walking on that sidewalk towards the building, there's a crosswalk there, and the two end parking spaces that head in, at where you would cross from the crosswalk, there's a, there's a ramp with landing there, we've added two bollards, one, each head of those head-in parking spaces, just to make sure that the cars don't park over that landing space. Again, not a big change, just something that we wanna pick up in the plan set. Next bullet is the, the front entrance, there's five parking spaces against the building. Previously, those were straight 90-degree head-in parking spaces, we've added a slight angle, just again, it's gonna be much easier to access those spaces with that slight angle to those parking spaces, rather than the, the 90 against the building.
And that's with the two handicap spots?
That's correct, yes.
And?
Two, okay. You might glasses.
That's all ADA compliant, it meets, the angles are okay?
Yes, yep, absolutely. Third bullet, fencing and wooden guide rail, it's on the plan right, the bottom right, the previous plan didn't contemplate the edge condition between our property and the abutting property. What, what goes down that property line essentially is a, a cable guide rail that's kind of in disrepair. It actually goes onto our property, which we didn't pick up on as part of the original plan, so what we're proposing to do is, where it enters into our property, we'll just propose a, a new guide rail, so it will look much better and actually function the way we want it to, just to, again, provide that edge condition along that property line, to delineate the parking lot between our, our property. Last, second and last bullet, on the plan left, we provided some EV parking spaces and retaining wall. Effectively, we just had to update or enhance the retaining wall to find a, retaining wall is a little bit narrow, so that we could fit in the actual charging stations for those EV chargers. The same amount of parking spaces, dimensions, all of that, nothing really's changed, but you might just notice a little bit of a, a modification in that area to make sure that we could actually fit in the charging stations in that, that part of the property line. And the last bullet, very technical in nature, the stormwater chambers, the underground stormwater chambers, one of the chambers discontinued, same company, they have essentially the same system, just different model, so we respect that, and it's an, still the same amount of stormwater going into the chambers, treatments all the same, nothing's really changing, really nothing you would actually notice. That was one of the technical details that updated, and then there's several conditions that required us to pick up some of the peer-review comments that weren't addressed, so we've addressed those as part of this plan. Upsizing a storm, a sewer main from, I think it was 18 to 22 inches, but again, those are all things that would've had to already been included in a final set before building permit, so technically probably didn't need to be included here, but we've added, just to, so you know it's changing. I think with that, take any questions, or pivot over to signage?
Yep. Go ahead. Can you just explain one more time, sorry, it kind of blew past, I could write down the, the one-foot adjustment toward East Street?
Sure, I'll, I'll point on the screen, it'll be, be easier, yep. Be easier, yep. So this building corner was previously 6.6 feet to the property line. And this column expanded out a little bit, so now it's 5.5 feet. So we have a foot closer to E Street. And the required, we're allowed to go to zero foot technically in this zone. So it's still compliant, it's just a little bit closer.
The column for the, sorry?
The outside of the building corner?
Yep.
There's a column there, instead of it being this big and you need to be this big. So we didn't have to do that in our drawings.
Okay.
I have a question on the stormwater chambers. So we know that Spring Brook runs underneath this, this property. What's going to be the elevation? Is that going to change the elevation of the, the building? Meaning, with all this new work and finalizing plans, is the building still going to be at street level or is this going to be up higher?
Yeah, no, no change to the finished floor of the building, anything of that nature. The changes of stormwater is taking a, there's no really perceptible change there. Spring Brook crosses just off to the right side of the property, doesn't actually go under our property. Just want to clarify that as well.
Okay, so it, it doesn't go under?
It's up here, right? This is Spring Brook up here?
Correct. It culverts underneath along this property line. And then eventually it comes through.
Okay. So if somebody is standing on, on E Street and they're looking at your main entrance, what's the elevation change? Does, is there any elevation change from E Street to the entrance of the building in all this redesign?
Not from what was approved.
Okay.
I'm following your question. You're asking if we've changed the elevation of the building all from what you approved to this modified set?
Right.
Yeah, no, that, that would have said, that hasn't touched, that hasn't changed since.
John?
It was less than a foot from, from Main Street to the main entry, or Main Street does slope, but.
Well, E Street.
Level, yeah, pretty level.
What's that?
It, it's fairly level, E Street grade to the front door. It's not a huge grade change there.
Patrick, did you have something on that?
No, I just, I, I think I was trying to follow what you're saying. So you, I think it's at 140 is the, is that the contour? I think John just wanted to make sure, if you look, you know, it's eye level from the, from the street.
I would say relatively, yes.
Yeah.
We don't want that building any higher.
No, it's not that I don't want the building any higher. I, I'm not, already not happy with that. What I don't want is what got approved up on High Plains Street where.
Oh, yes.
It was a, it was level and now the building is.
Five feet higher.
It's higher, right, so.
No, we're, we're very locked in on our grading and we have been, and there's no voting to that here.
It's roughly a foot or a little over from the street to the. Here, here you've got a 140 and then this is a 141. They're talking this much over.
Okay, that's, and it should be raised up a little, so, okay, but I just.
While you're there, could you, could you just repoint out where Spring Brook, the Spring Brook culvert is?
And with the revision, I watched it last time on this, but I want to make sure.
Said it followed a prop, your property line?
The revisions haven't given more ledge space.
Understood. Property line jogs in.
Yes.
It comes in and then goes over. So it, I believe it goes under this, this building, the abutting building in some way. But we know it goes here and then connects in where it daylights over there.
Okay.
And what I think, as an easement, that's what, I thought the easement was for the drain, the easement that goes through the edge of the property.
You're probably thinking of the sewer easement.
The sewer easement, right.
Yeah, 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 yep.
All good on that?
I'm, is everybody good on? Let's talk about signage.
How you guys doing? My name is Colin Middleton. I'm the experiential designer working on behalf of the MEBNSA, the signage fabricator. I think we're just going to run you guys through these kind of super quick. I don't know if you've seen them yet. But just to kind of give you the rundown, what we're looking at right now is the primary property monument sign. So we'd like to put this out front, kind of right at the main entrance perpendicular to E Street.
I'm going to skip around because I think as we talk about signage, you're going to want to know where it is.
All right, yeah, it makes sense.
And also.
I think you have. So if you look at the monument sign, this shows where that monument sign was located. So I'll look back.
Are you calling that your main ID?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a, it's a pretty standard monument sign. I don't know if you guys want to talk about branding at all. I can kind of just talk about the actual engineering of it or talk about.
Can I just interrupt you for one second?
Of course, yeah.
So this is different than what we've been talking about up to this point? Because up to this point, it's all been basically modify, you know, plan updates and modifications. This is, you're actually asking for, says here, a request for waivers.
That, that's fair, Mr. Chairman, and we'll talk about that. But unlike the architectural and the civil engineering, which we talked about at length during the public hearing process, if you recall, we didn't have a signage plan to share with you. And it was always our intent to come back, which is what we're doing this evening, to share that. So there are two waivers that are part and parcel to what we're sharing. So I think what we'd like to do is just introduce our signage and then we'll explain to you how, what, what the kind of variance is, if you will, from the signage bylaws, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all, we're all clear that the other, the other things we talked about tonight were, you know, modifications within, within the project. But now you're ask, you're, you're showing the signage plan, but part of that is going to be.
We need two waivers.
You're going to be asking for waivers. So we're almost going, we're almost going back to, to the request for waivers.
Well, I, I'm not sure I would characterize it that way. I mean, we're asking for the board to approve the signage package as presented. And as such, there are two waivers that will be required, which are enumerated in the request. So I don't know that we're going back because we've never produced this signage package. And there's two waivers, for instance, and not to take Colin's thunder, but basically this sign is six feet, six inches, not six feet, six inches above what's allowed under the, the local signage bylaw. So that would be one waiver. And then we'll get to the other waivers. So I don't know if, I, I think it makes sense. Why don't we run through the signs first and then we'll talk about the waivers?
So as Jeff just mentioned, the sign is six inches over. The cabinet itself is actually within, with, is compliant with the town's bylaws. What brings it over is the raised base down at the bottom. We are also concerned with snow and snow removal. So we like to elevate these kind of things and keep hardware and paint away from salt, snow elements, you know, dogs walking by, that kind of thing. We're also pitching internal illumination on these. We've presented a, an alternate option in case you guys don't like that, that shows light, lighting bars being installed within the base itself, pointing upwards. The preference is actually going to be, yeah, here we go. So this is the very rudimentary rendering that kind of shows light being shown up from the base. Lights would be installed within that, that little cavity and then shown upwards. If you go one more down. This is kind of a preferred tact. It has all internal illumination. It's got the brushed copper on that leaf there, which is raised off of the sign cabinet by about an inch. The return of that would be illuminated from the inside. It would be diffused by a layer of acrylic. We'd be able to control the actual light settings with an LED, with an app, or from within the building, as well as the lighting that goes through the sanctuary portion of the, of the logo mark. Go down again. This is just kind of a temporary addition for the duration of lease up. It's a simple aluminum sign, double sided, just kind of advertising, you know, the building's getting leased up. I don't believe that we've solidified or finalized the, the actual copy of it. Kind of just a conceptual plan.
It's an appendage.
More of a temporary.
Right. So this represents the primary channel letter. It'll go over the building entry at the front of the building. It's, I believe we're pitching three inches deep with a maximum of 18 inches high, below about 10 and a half inches on the T of the dub. This would also be internally illuminated through the face. We'd be able to control the brightness with LEDs, with diffusers on the acrylic. So this is to show scale, day versus night. If I go down again, and I think we'll get the location of it. Straight out front. This is our kind of primary pan sign that we'd be using to advertise the actual building address. We've raised it to the third floor of the building to, just to give it a little bit more higher visibility from longer distances. This is going to have kind of a similar feel to the, the brushed copper that was on the primary monument sign. But since these are going to be a little bit bigger, we've used a reverse open channel letter, which means that the light is actually going to be reflected backwards at the building, not outward. So it creates a nice little halo. So it won't be causing light issues. It'll just make it more visible at night without making the lighting too in your face. Location, again, kind of right above where the primary channel letters are, above the building entry. This is the signage for East Share, which I believe Embark was speaking about earlier. This is the community area that would be accessible by the public and by tenants. Again, we're going for internal illumination here. It'd be a pan sign, so this would be open at the back. Lighting would shine through, the acrylic letters, diffusers, LED light control, et cetera. That is the location of East Share, down there at the, the end of the property. This is our final addition to the exterior of the building. It'd be a temporary lease up banner for the duration of lease up, generally about 24 months. It is just a banner, so there's nothing really fancy going on here. We would like to use self-illuminating banner tension brackets to actually keep it up there. So it'd be banner brackets, top and bottom, internally illuminated from the top and bottom. Yeah, not too much light pollution going on with that one. Installed at the back of the building, so also kind of hidden away from the public. I believe there's a train, stationary track that kind of runs by this, that'd be the primary audience.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, we, we walked through kind of the signage package. So in the, in the request that was submitted, as we've written, we're asking for a waiver to allow for the additional six inches in height for the monument sign. And we're asking the board to waive the restriction that such ground sign may only be externally lit and to approve the internal lighting as detailed on the attached plan set. And then the, the, so that relates to the monument sign. And then just reading from our, on the other signs that we introduced, the zoning provision 7.5, point A, point five allows for one sign on two exterior walls, so a total of two exterior wall mounted sign. Zoning provision 7.6 limits the overall number of signs to identify as business to two total signs. As such, we are requesting a waiver to allow for the exterior building signage as depicted within exhibit C. A, an eyebrow sign over the building front entrance. B, the property address sign. C, the East Share sign, which promotes the amenity space available to the general public. And D, a now leasing sign to be affixed to the rear of the building facing the tracks and which will not be visible from E Street. In total, the applicant requests a waiver to provide for four total exterior wall mounted signs as detailed within the plan set provided as exhibit C. So hopefully that's reasonably clear. If anybody has any questions on any of the specifics of the signs, how they work, I think we did a hopefully decent job showing you where they would go. A little bit of context, the number was actually requested by the fire department as an identifier. So we have the sanctuaries, obviously, you know, the property name. But then the big, and, and I'm not even sure that the post office, I think dictates what the ultimate number will be. We showed 1015. I'm not sure that that's going to be the number, but whatever the address is, that will be that. And then we thought it would be important to have the East Share signage because that is open to the public. And without some sort of signage as proposed, it's a logical conclusion to think that nobody's going to know about that. And then, and then what we're asking for is a temporary sign on the back of the property for 24 months during the lease up phase. And then that sign can be taken down. So hopefully that's a reasonable explanation of what we're asking for.
So the town has bylaws as you, you've cited, you've cited them here. And I guess the question is, we've, we've had other people come to this board asking for a variance from, from the bylaws. Why, why does this project need things that other, other developments in other businesses comply with?
Well, I mean, this board has given a lot of waivers to lots of other things that it probably doesn't customarily give to other applicants. I mean, this is a unique project. We have a big affordability component. It's serving a huge need, not only in Walpole, but the Commonwealth. Really what we're asking for is just signage to make this more user friendly to municipal departments, i.e. fire and police. You don't want us to put an East Share sign up? Fine, we won't put that sign up and nobody's going to know that space is available to the public. So if you don't like that sign, we'll take that out. So I, I think what we've asked for is very reasonable. It's practical, it's pragmatic, and it makes for a better experience for not only the residents, but, you know, other people that, you know, may be going to the site for whatever reason. So we, we think it's pretty reasonable.
It's, the question is, you know, other businesses comply with the zoning bylaws and, you know, why? I'm trying to figure out why this has to be done. Why do they have to be interior lit? We don't allow that in this, this zone.
I mean, I would put it to the board, the people that probably made those bylaws probably weren't really well versed in signage. This sign is much nicer and the illumination will actually be much less if it's interior lit than if we have light bars at the bottom shining light up. So it, it's a nicer, higher class sign to be interior lit than having it, having. So it's a nicer, higher-class sign to be interior lit than having it, having us adhere to, you know, the exterior illumination. I mean, can you tell me why the bylaws, the written way it is, to not allow interior illumination?
Yeah, it had to do with the character of the downtown business district. People that voted for that and approved it thought that interior-lit signs were not as attractive to the community.
Well, I'm not going to disagree with that, but I will say, if you put our two signs next to each other, and you had the interior-lit sign and you had the exterior-lit sign, the interior-lit sign is way nicer than the exterior. If you want us to do the exterior, we'll live with that, but it's going to be more light and not as nice. So I don't know what you're accomplishing by making us adhere to that, but...
But what we'd be doing is we'd be staying with the bylaws that the people of Walpole have voted for, and that's what they expect in the downtown business district.
So they expect or want a worse sign?
Well, your opinion is worse. I don't, I don't make judgments whether it's better or worse. I just go by what have the people in the community said they want, and what, that's what they say.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to argue with you, but it seems counterintuitive to me to make us adhere to something that's actually going to be less attractive and worse off for people, you know, than, than an interior illuminated sign. You've granted other waivers on this project. I don't have them in front of me because it's not for debate tonight, but how many waivers do we have? 20, 30, whatever it is? So to give us a waiver for an interior illuminated sign, which will be nice, I mean, we're not like asking for a ticker tape or something like that where people might be like, oh, you're kind of pushing the envelope. I mean, you don't want us to do the East Share sign? Fine, we won't do that. It's going to be to the town's detriment by limiting us to two signs. You don't want us to do the number? Fine, tell the fire chief and the police chief. We'll just stick with the sanctuary, and we'll stick with now leasing on the rear of the building. We'll have two signs, and we'll be happy, so...
So you probably know that the, there's a requirement to have a number on the building. So, you know, whether it's going to be a big illuminated number, but, you know, that's, that's a fire safety requirement to have a number on the building. So it's, what you want is a big illuminated sign, and what I'm just saying is, that's not what the, that's not what the town bylaw states.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I don't disagree. If you want to make us adhere to that, fine. It's going to be a worse project. It doesn't hurt us. We can throw a little, like I have on my house, you want us to throw a little 1015? It's not a sign, it's just numbers. We'll be compliant, not going to be helpful to people looking for a number on the building or whatnot, you know? Not having an East Share sign, so people don't know there's space available that they can come and lease? Fine, don't, don't give us those two things. You're only hurting the intent of what we're trying to do, and I would ask the board to appeal to its own pragmatism and reasonableness in looking at what we presented and saying, okay, it might not be exactly what was written in the bylaws, but you all understand this project. God knows how many hearings you sat through, so you're, you're thinking like, you know what? We're at the goal line here. The interior illuminated sign's going to be nicer. We're going to give the fire and police a nice number that they can see. We're going to have an East Share sign, so people know that there's a space. And yeah, we typically, I mean, a building that's 3,000 square feet might only need two signs. This is, I mean, what are we, 178,000 square feet? To say that we need a few more signs, which are subtle, if you ask me, doesn't seem like a huge ask, but I'll stop talking.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a comment? Mr. Sign Man, could you speak to the signs, please? Are you going to tell us that you're going to make a, for lack of a better word, a crappy exterior-lit sign?
I don't think we'll do that.
Okay.
In either case, but it's never the goal.
It's not the goal to make a bad sign?
Certainly not.
Bad for you? Okay, all right.
And it's not the interior-lit sign, a nice sign?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
I'm sure it is, but, but remember, you're in our downtown. We had a case where the small businessman came in and wanted an interior illuminated sign, and it was withdrawn because it wasn't going to fly. That's why we have this bylaw. Interior, interior-lit signs, perfect on Route One. Beautiful, lovely, on a hotel. You're in our downtown, so I would like to see you fit into our downtown. That's my opinion. The six-inch taller, can you live with not exceeding the six inches that we ask you to do? One sign is six inches taller. So that, to me, that's a variance. We're talking, I know we're talking inches, but we've turned variances down when someone wants to put a porch six inches too close to a line.
Just for clarification, this isn't a variance.
Yes, it is, sir.
It's a, it's a, we're asking for a waiver under 40B. It's not a variance in the same context that, that what people come before this board. We're asking for a waiver to be granted under the comprehensive permit. We're asking the zoning board, as the permit granting authority, to give us a waiver. If you want the sign to be six inches shorter, we can live with that. The interior, I'm at a loss. The interior-lit sign, yes, it's in a downtown area. It's nicer. I mean, I don't understand this, but fine, if you don't want to give us that, fine. You don't want to give us the signs, fine. It makes no practical sense to deny these things because it's a worse project, and it's worse for the people of Walpole, other than you guys being able to say, oh, well, we, we upheld the zoning bylaws, which maybe that's your primary objective. So that's where we're at.
If I could continue? So if you can live with the six inches, that'd be great. Cut that off. The appendage, appendage sign, in your words, which would be attached to one of the signs on the East Street side?
The primary monument sign.
The primary, yeah, okay. I would like to see that be the message, only now leasing. I don't want, I don't want it to be a message board for anything else that's going on in the property. I, I'm not a fan of vertical numbers, not a fan at all, so if anyone else has a problem with that, I'd like to see just a regular 1051 or whatever, okay? I also am not, I'm not in favor of, for high visibility to have anything planted on the third floor of the building. I think that was one of the sign locations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not in favor of that. You want to, you have high, high visibility, you're going to be the tallest building in town. I think people will know it's there without a sign being on the third floor.
Understood.
Okay. So those are my comments. And the lease-up being around the back is temporary?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's your, what's your definition of temporary?
Generally, about 24 months.
Temporary, 24?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I, I had the opportunity to drive, drive up Route One in Revere, and that's all you saw was now leasing, now leasing, now leasing. They didn't put it on the waterfront side, it was on the roadside, so I guess this will be on the backside with the railroad tracks, but I'm not quite sure. And it's not lit, it's just a...
No, it is.
It would be lit?
Exterior illumination.
Exterior. 24 months?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a little longer than temporary, but I'm done for now.
Anybody else?
Joan, I just, I just had some comments. I was thinking back to the case that we had for a sign variance, I just wanted to point out clarity, because we had this conversation with the building commissioner, too. Backlit is different than internally illuminated. So I know the sign for 1015 itself showed the backlit lighting. We wouldn't classify that as internally illuminated, so that would probably be a permissible, I guess, illumination, just for that sign, because the lighting is shining from the back. The wall signs themselves, it's kind of an interesting situation, just because I, in a sense, you have obviously the primary purpose, which is the residential building, but the East Share location, if that is supposed to be publicly accessible, it almost acts as a second tenant, in a way. Just the way I'm reading it, I, but I mean, that's obviously up to the board's interpretation or the board's, I guess, decision today, but it's, that's two points there. I just wanted to say, like, backlit is something that is not the same as internally illuminated. And in terms of the wall signs, like the East Share, it's not specific to the residential use, so it might be its own separate thing and not actually need a waiver.
Okay. That's, that's good to know.
Yeah.
I think that's also interesting. So when we, you used the example of out on Route One, those internally, internally lit signs, that's where the light bulbs are inside and it glows out. And what you're talking about is backlit?
Yes, it's a reverse open channel letter. So the lights are inside of the channel letters, but they shoot outwards from the back.
Against the building.
Sorry?
Against the building.
Yes.
Right.
That was one of the options we did mention to that, to that commercial applicant, and we didn't go that direction, but we did have a discussion about that.
Okay. Other board members, what are your thoughts on this question about signage?
At common space, I agree. Somebody said that, I think that should have its own sign. Almost shouldn't be considered part of the signage for the residential...
But that's what Patrick just said.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that as well. I think that sign needs to be there. I have a short list of things here. I think, I understand the concern about the length of time that a now leasing sign would be up, although it's against the railroad tracks. I understand wanting to limit that, and so that's something I would be interested in is letting it happen, but, but, you know, stipulate exactly how long it's going to be there as a condition. As far as the signage, I think your sign in front is actually going to be pretty, and the design is good. I like the materials you're going to use, the way you're going to light it, in my opinion, and that's what all of this, some of this is, is opinion. I think it's going to be a good addition. I think it's going to look nice. Am I happy about the size of the building? No, but make it look pretty.
Of course.
That's, so it's my thoughts on that. And I think you clarified, there's a variability of lighted signs, whether it's interior, you know, interior illuminated, or backlit, or this or that. So I, I think we need to be clear on what's what and what they're recommending, what that looks like, and, you know, just before we say, like, I'm not going to say no, but...
Relative to the member, we can do vertical numbers. We don't have to do horizontal. And, you know, if we could get 18 months instead of 24, it's a little bit more temporary.
And now leasing just doesn't look good.
Yeah, but it's facing the tracks. I mean, nobody in town's going to see that.
No, no, even on the front. That just doesn't, it's kind of cheap. People are going to search for an apartment online.
Well, you'd be surprised. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people traveling down East Street.
I'm not going to argue with you, but...
Right, sure, fair. So...
So what's, it... I'm pretty clear. We have the bylaws, and I feel that's what, that's what the zoning board has to look at. With the 40B, we always have to look at, would this make it uneconomic if this wasn't granted? I don't see, there was no talk about, about that. So, you know, I think that, like other people in town, they should comply with the zoning bylaws for signage, so...
Yeah, I think that's similar where my head's at, is I feel like there can be adjustments made to some of these signs to make them compliant with the laws, and if it's something with the number of signs, that's where I would probably have the most leeway, because it is a large building. I don't think the bylaw was written with the consideration of a building of this size. And if we can get the lighting so that that doesn't require a, because I still look at this as, this is a variance. I know it's 40B, and it's kind of packaged differently, but if somebody was coming to us outside of a 40B project and asking for this sign, it would be a variance they'd be looking for. So we have a high bar for variance, and I think I would apply that to any project regardless of the filing status.
So just to be clear, if we swapped out all of the facelit interior illumination for reverse open channel letters, that would be all right with you guys?
Yeah, I mean, again, if that complies with our bylaw, I think that, that would get both of us on, on board.
Okay. Which, uh, second? That would be on primary monument sign, the primary channel letter. What we could also do is return illumination, so neither the rear or the front is illuminated. It's the return of the letter. Would that pass muster, or is that...
I'm really not sure what you just said.
All right, so the return of a channel letter is like the side, if you're thinking about like a 3D letter?
Yeah.
You switch it on your side, you're looking at it from the side, like, that's the return. So we could light that to the face or from the rear?
Yeah. So I mean, when you get into the technicals, that's where I go back, I would probably want to talk to the building commissioner. I remember the thought discussion about...
It's really his interpretation.
The halo lighting and the backlighting, but that specific information, I have to see what it would look like and talk about it.
I think to the, to the point that we've talked about is, internally lit is not allowed in the downtown business district. And you can have, you know, externally lit, you can have backlit, these, these different things. My, I, I come back to, again, I just say, comply with, you know, comply with the zoning, and it's, it doesn't seem like this is, you know, it's not a, shouldn't be a deal breaker and just, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary.
I mean, and I also packaged with all the other changes that you came to us with, which I think most of them are very reasonable and insignificant. So that, the problem is, the signage right now is kind of making me think this is not insignificant.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Can, can the board move to approve the first two-thirds, the architecture and the civil, and we'll come back, or we'll resubmit a signage package based on what we've heard tonight? Just so I'm clear, though, you're saying you don't think we should get anything, in which case we're limited to two signs. Am I understanding that?
Two, two exterior signs, correct.
Okay. So we're going to do away with the East Share sign to the detriment of the town? Just so you're sure? That, that's, okay.
That's the opinion of one member.
No, what I say is, the bylaw says two exterior sign. If you want to do something to the detriment to Walpole, that's on you, not on me.
No, because we need to have a sign to the front door. I mean, right? Right? To the building? As, if we're given the choice, we have to have signage that says the sanctuary, which is the name of the building, and we're going to ask to have a now leasing sign on the back of the building. We'll, we'll put a decal of a number, so that sign will be taken away, and the East Share sign will be taken away.
And you can, you could have exter, you could have backlit lights for the sign. I'm not going to tell you how to design your project, but I think what you're hearing from me is that you've got the bylaw, and other people in the downtown district...
Well, can I, respectfully, can I, can you ask how the other board members feel? Because I'm surprised by that, the direction, but...
I think that's reasonable. Do you want to go? How do you folks feel?
The lighting has to be for downtown, the way it is now. I totally agree with that. I looked at the East Share as something separate, to be honest with you.
And that's what Patrick pointed out, that it probably would be because it's a separate entity.
It's a separate use. It's, it's different than the building.
So, but if, in your words, you do it to the detriment of the town, that's on you. Okay? Judy?
I'd like to stick with the, the standard that we've had for downtown, as I said earlier. And there's, there's got to be other ways to identify the, the East Share, whether it's a ground something, a wayfinding thing. I mean, wayfinding's the big thing now, so Patrick?
I mean, it's the board's call. I would just, I could talk to the building commissioner. My impression of it, though, is that it's, it's a separate use. It's almost like a different tenant of the building because it's serving the out, the public at large, whereas the other signs are primary residential for the people utilizing the apartments.
And that would comply with the zoning?
Did I quickly follow up on that?
Sure.
Is a wayfinding sign classified differently than a monument sign or a property sign?
I mean, so usually when we have wayfinding for like a private development, you're talking about like circulation. I don't know how it would look in this context, you know? I don't, I really don't.
Mostly just asking for what would constitute a wayfinding sign versus a property sign. Yeah.
All right. So, so, Mr. Chairman, back to my original request. I, I think we'd make good progress if we could get the architectural and the civil stuff that we submitted. There's no change in waivers. It's, I, from the members' own mouth, it seemed reasonable and whatnot. And then we'll come back, and maybe we won't even submit anything. and then we'll come back and maybe we won't even submit anything, because we'll, we'll deal with what is required, and I understand what you're saying, but you have to understand, you're putting us to a choice relative to the signage that we're allowed to do, so don't, it's not on me because we don't have signage to a space that the board of selectmen themselves requested specifically, we didn't want to do this, they made us do it, so now that we're going to have to go back and, so, we're not going to say anything, they're going to be like WTF, like, you did this space and you have no sign, and I'm going to say, yeah, the zoning board wouldn't let us do a sign, go figure, so...
Old trash and field?
So, anyway, if you're fine with that, we're fine with that.
Okay, so, to, to your point, I think what we can do is, we can move forward by saying that we've reviewed the architectural plan updates, the project's site and civil plan and landscape updates, and, so we've, we've reviewed the changes, the proposed changes, and we find that those are not, what's the technical?
Substantial.
In substantial, right, in substantial, does every, before we vote on it, does anybody have any questions on that?
The application, does it state a generator, because the drawings that we're about to approve have generators on every page, and that was one thing I was ready to go to battle tonight, so it was the best dudes in the world that you said you were removing it from the plan, so now the fact that it's on every drawing that we're about to approve is, and it's in this narrative that you put together for us.
Condition, you can condition it.
Can you reject that one bullet point?
I, I, yeah, I mean, Chairman, whatever, whatever.
I do have a question about that, though. I just have one question, without a generator, with the size of this building, are there going to be emergency lights that'll go on?
Yes.
Just automatically, not, not a gener, not a generator required?
Correct.
Okay, batteries?
Batteries?
It's very common for lighting to have battery backups.
Right, I know that.
A lot of technical issues with backups, so...
So, do you have concerns?
No, I just, no, 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 on the roof, absolutely not, my, my main thought was just that the plans show it, the, the plans that are part of the, what's going to be our ruling, for reference.
No, so, I think what...
To the members' concern, we have to, I think it's stated in the comp permit, we have to submit a plan set before we submit it to the building inspector, so that plan said the generator will be fully removed prior, so you get another, or final bite at the apple, I guess I would say, so it will be everything that you see before you minus the generator, and that's plan set will be submitted to this board, you know, as part of, you know, our application to the building permit.
Yeah. Can that be a condition, because if, if it's in the plan, it's, it looks like it's there, we're going to wait, are we going to see that plan again? We have to rely on the building inspector.
Yeah, so, what we would approve is...
No, we have to submit it to you guys, you don't have to rely on the building inspector.
Just give them a copy of the final plan.
Right.
Just a copy.
Well, we'd get, we'd get it, so, but, I think what we can do is, we can move forward by saying that we find that the proposed changes are not substantial, and the, everything that was in the memorandum dated November 5th, except the rooftop generator, that's, we strike that out, and the final revised plan will show no generator, okay, was that true?
Yeah, on the roof, that was the main thing.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, talking against myself, but you also have to strike the two bullets related to the signage.
Right, no, I, because, actually, what I referenced was, what we were going to approve was the architectural plan updates and the project site, so I didn't even go into the...
I misunderstood.
I didn't even talk about the signage, do you?
Yeah.
Okay, Laura, Laura?
Yes.
Do you understand what's being, what the motion will be?
Yes.
Okay, so, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the architectural plan updates as shown on the, as listed in the memorandum dated November 5th and shown in the plans of record dated, I can't even read these.
I think it's referenced in the letter, Mr. Chairman, so I don't even think you need them.
Okay, okay, and the one that we're going to strike out of all those things that we do find is in, not substantial, the rooftop generator, everything else, we were okay with under those two sections, and project signage is taken out, we're not dealing with that tonight.
So, do we want a new plan for that?
What's that?
Do we want a new plan for that? So, we want them to come back with a, with a...
That's their call, right?
That's their call, because he can either comply with the zoning, or he can come back with a, another plan.
Another plan.
Yeah, okay, okay, does somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Moved by Drew?
Second.
Second by Mark, any further discussion?
I just have one question, we had a modification memorandum that was signed by Mr. Engler and...
Jim?
Jim Johnson.
Yeah, so I can comment on that, that was part of the reason why this was initially withdrawn back in the summer, the select board, being that this was done as a friendly 40B, there was that MOA that was signed by them, and some of those conditions were changing as part of the modification, in discussion with, obviously, the select board and the applicant, they withdrew their initial modification request to resolve the issues of the MOA, the MOA was resolved, which is why we included a copy with the, their...
Okay, I know I'm being picky, but it's not dated at the top, it's just dated on the signatures, if that means anything.
I think I just printed the sign, it is finalized, though.
Okay, okay, that's all.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion before us, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion, thank you, Judy, on that, okay, all those in favor of approving with the generators taken out, and no, nothing about signage, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so carried, okay, thank you, we appreciate your time. Okay. So, next, the last thing I think we have on the agenda is the minutes from November 5th, and I did have a chance to review these, and I already asked Lauren how she does them, because they're extremely accurate, there were just a couple small, very minor typos, nothing substantial, I'm going to pass those over to Lauren, but, does somebody want to make a motion to approve with the very minor modifications?
Moved.
Okay, moved by Mark, Drew, you can't vote on this one? Somebody else want to second it?
Second.
Okay, second by Judy, okay, any further discussion on the minutes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, so carried, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Merry Christmas.